Good afternoon, oops, can you hear me? Okay, there, that's better. Good afternoon, welcome to the February 19th, 2009 meeting of the Planning Commission for the City of Santa Barbara. Ms. Rodriguez, welcome back, and would you please call the roll? Commissioner Bartlet?
Here.
Commissioner Jacobs?
Here.
Commissioner Justice?
Here.
Commissioner Lodge?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Chair Larson? Here. Thank you very much. The second part of the meeting, the second item is to please turn off your electronic devices. We do it from up here, too. And we will, we hope that you also don't use any texting during your meeting. We can't, so you can't either. And the jawbones and all the other conducting instruments that you may have to communicate with during the meeting. So please make sure all communication is turned off. I would ask, I would like to welcome students today. Could you put your hands up so we can see who you are? Wow, look at this, this is great. Trish, put your hand down. From Paul Wax's class. And somebody can tell me, please, come up quick to the microphone, identify yourself, and tell us the name of your class. Anybody?
Who wants an A?
Who wants the A? That's right. Get up here. Okay?
My name is Mark Steven, and it's an environmental planning course.
Oh, welcome. Well, you'll have an interesting agenda today. Thank you, great topic. So stay as long as you can stand to be seated in the uncomfortable seats, and when you do need to leave, you just drift out, and it's fine. You don't have to ask, you can just depart. Okay, any announcements?
No, thank you.
Oh, that was easy. Any appeals?
No.
Oh, okay. Now I'll open the public hearing, take public comment on any item not on the agenda. You may come and speak for up to two minutes. Anything students want to talk about UCSB? Anything? No? Okay, then I'll close the public hearing. And we will, just so you know, for purposes of public comment, there are green slips in the back of the room. So if you wish to comment publicly on the agendized items, please go to that back desk, pick up a green slip, write your name, and give it to the staff person over here, that's Dan, and we'll be happy to call you up in turn to speak your piece. Thank you very much. With that, we'll start off with Ms. Johnston and a staff report.
The project I have here today is the project located at 124 Los Iguares Avenue. The purpose of today's hearing is to receive comments on the draft initial study and mitigated negative declaration from the public and the Planning Commission. The project is located south of US Highway 101, and the railroad tracks on, oops, sorry. There we go. On Los Iguares, and as indicated by the yellow arrow where it is located. The project is proposed to demolish the existing single-family residence and detached garage, and remove the existing landscape, and they will construct a new three-unit, three-story residential building above a ground-level parking area and replant native plantings within the Mission Creek Development Limitation Area, which is 25 feet from the top of the bank, as shown here on the site plan. So we have Mission Creek right here. It's a channelized portion of Mission Creek, 25-foot setback. There is no building or overhangs projections within that 25 feet, and a new curb cut and under-story parking area. The project history includes, they submitted a master application on October 11th of 2004. They then proceeded on to Architectural Board of Review for Concept Review. They had three concept reviews on November 8th, 2004, January 3rd, 2006, February 13th, 2006, before they were forwarded on to the Planning Commission with comments. They also went to the Historic Landmarks Commission for acceptance of an archaeological report, as well as a Historic Structures Report in 2005. They returned, or they came to Planning Commission for Concept Review in November of 2006, where they received some comments and direction. Subsequent to that, they submitted revised plans that followed the direction of the Planning Commission to reduce the building height and address some noise issues that were on the private outdoor living space. And they incorporated those mitigations into the project. An initial study was prepared because there was classed to impacts. The structure itself is eligible as a structure of merit, but was not designated, so, because it was classed to, initial study was prepared. The required applications for this project are a coastal development permit to allow construction of a new multifamily residential building within the appealable jurisdiction of the coastal zone, a modification to allow the third story to encroach into the front yard setback along Los Iguares Avenue, and two modifications on either interior setback to allow encroachments of the structure on, I believe, all three levels within those setbacks, and a tentative subdivision map to allow one-lot subdivision for the purposes of three condominiums. The purpose of an initial study is to provide analysis of the project's environmental impacts and measure what evidence we have on hand to determine whether or not there are significant impacts, and ultimately decide whether a negative declaration or an environmental impact report In this initial study, we identified three potentially significant but mitigable impacts with areas, which are the archaeological resources, historic resources, and noise. The site was identified as having the potential for prehistoric and historic resources, but there are no known significant resources on the site, there's just the potential. So mitigation measure was to have construction monitoring by an archaeologist. As for historic resources, as I identified before, this was eligible to be designated as a structure of merit, however, it was not. And mitigation measure is to provide documentation of the existing site to be demolished and offer the building up for relocation or salvage, as well as the new construction should be compatible with the West Beach neighborhood style. The noise report that was conducted analyzed the potential of noise impacts on the private outdoor living spaces from surrounding uses like the railroad and Highway 101, and they have incorporated design measures to reduce the long-term noise impacts. So in conclusion, with the implementation of the mitigation measures that are outlined in the draft mitigated negative declaration, these significant impacts can be reduced to a less-than-significant level, and all other issues identified in the report have no impact or a less-than-significant impact.
Thank you very much, Ms. Johnston. Is there a presentation from the applicant at all? All right. Please come forward and identify yourself. Fifteen minutes.
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Mark Edwards, and I am the applicant of 124 Los Iguares Avenue, and I appreciate being here today and opportunity to share the project with you from an environmental standpoint. I've brought along Gil Johnson here, who's going to run the computer for me, because I'm crippled in that aspect, and my project architect, Pete Aylin, who's helped me along with this, what I feel is excellent project. I do understand that we're here to talk about the environmental aspects of our project today, and I'll try and keep my focus on that and keep it simple and short. I'd like to just real-run-through real quickly, a little brief overview of the project from an environmental standpoint, to let you know what we have tried to accomplish from that aspect. Let's see, try the next one. There we go. This is our site plan, and what we've done here in respect to the neighborhood is we have located the front of our project pretty much in line with the existing neighborhood's front yard setback. And I'll, that's, it's about 10-foot on the first floor and second floor, and we have a 15-foot third-floor setback, which is according to municipal code. We have our side yards here of about six feet to the building. We do have along there some little slight architectural projections that encroach a little farther, about two feet more or four feet from our property lines. Those are architectural features that are really incorporated in the style of the building, which is very important. In the rear, we have a 25-foot area of separation from the waterway. That's about 15 feet farther than the required 10-foot yard setback, but again, that is in response to environmental concerns and land use planning as far as open way along the waterway. We have also, let's try the next slide. In the project, we have incorporated some, I think, very wonderful hydrology issues. We have a bioswale along this westerly property line to collect rainwaters and hold those for a certain period of time for either recharging into the groundwater systems or filtration, before that water is then released into what's under the drive area here is a lower, under-chamber underneath the drive area that, again, will hold water on-site during a rainstorm, reducing runoff, eventually letting it go out onto the street. By the use of those features, we're able to reduce normal rainwater on the site in all conditions, in a one-year storm, which would be our sort of normal application here in Santa Barbara, there'll be no runoff on the site, and we have significant reductions in a 10, 25, and 100-year storm events with those issues of hydrology. Let's see, let's try the next slide. I think we can pass on those. Let me just on this highlight, on the, we talked about the first and second floors, we have our 10-foot setback here, which is in deference to the neighborhood, and on the third floor, we have a 15-foot setback to the building, which is according to the municipal code for residential R4 structures. And in the back, as Suzanne had mentioned, we have, all of the building has been withdrawn to within, to at least 25 feet from the waterway. On this slide, what I'd like to highlight, again, in the environmental issues of the neighborhood, we have taken the building in an area that actually has an allowable 45-foot height restriction, and we have lowered the building down to just two inches over 30 feet. So it's a 15-foot reduction in height, again, to try and keep it in relationship to the neighborhood. So what we're showing here is a 30-foot, two-inch height. And we're able to do that, obviously, because we're using a style that uses flat roofs and trying to incorporate whatever building concerns we can in floors, and still keep good height with the floors. And I think really been able to come up with a very nice profile for a three-story building. Pete, or Gil, let's try the next one. We are incorporating an international style or a modern style. This certainly, I think, appropriate in the area as the land use plan calls for. One of the characteristics environmentally of the West Beach area is its unique combination of styles. There is certainly a historic or a Spanish flavor in the area, but the land use plan distinctly calls out that the style of the neighborhood is unique in its character for its combination of uses, both residential and commercial, and its styles. And we think that this style is certainly an addition and a good addition to that type of eclectic blend. We are developing these different elevations based on some of the changes that we've had in our process, so this is sort of an in-process view of where we are architecturally, showing the reductions of height, the changes to the rear elevation to provide those larger setback-type areas. With regard to biology, we have incorporated along the waterway a native habitat of plants. Our biologist has done a good study for that, and has come up with a plan that increases roosting and nesting for wildlife, birds, foraging in the berries in the situation along there. The rest of the site is planned to be native and non-native. And again, those pallet of plants has been in a collaboration between our biologist and our landscape architect, in an effort to not only provide an aesthetically pleasing project, but something that wildlife in the area would be interested in. Suzanne also mentioned that we have, as part of the project, a planned removal of a single-family residence. We are incorporating into our development plan an archival preservation of that building, which we think is an asset for the city's records, and we're proud and happy to do that. So, I think those are my comments. On the overall plan, I'd like to make a few specific comments, if I could, and they'll be very quick again, with regards to the MND itself. And I'll draw attention, if you'd like to follow along, or maybe you can just listen to what my comments would be about particular aspects of the MND for the record. Starting with the project description on the first page, and these comments are to be, are really directed to be more factual, and so that we have a good document at the end of the day to work with as a tool as we go forward in the development. In the characterization of the project, it talks about a 25-foot native riparian landscape. We are not proposing a riparian landscape, because our biologist says we can't do that. We have no connection with the waterway, and that's not possible. But we are having a native landscaping area along the waterway. The description further talks about the proposal of three king palm trees. We are only proposing two king palm trees in this area. Those are non-natives. There's a very specific reason that the biologist thinks that's important, and that's to increase the nesting and roosting of particular birds and bats, which he feels are very important to be able to encourage. So we are proposing two king palms here. There is a third tree, this is an existing canary palm, it's not on the property, it's adjacent to the property, and we're looking forward to try and help it along, it's been kind of butchered by Edison. And we have a couple of other palm trees that we have in here, but in the 25-foot area that we are having a native representation, we are proposing two king palm trees, not three. The report also describes a trumpet vine in this area. We have no proposal for a trumpet vine anyplace in this area. Again, this is a native pallet, and we don't, we're not doing that. On page two of the initial study, small issue, but just again, and just to be accurate, under, near the bottom of the page, we have, well, actually, at the top, we can, we still have our three king palm trees, that would go to two, so that would be consistent throughout the project descriptions. Near the bottom, under historical resource, it references the project site as the West Beach Neighborhood Ambassador Park. It's actually the Ambassador Track. The park is that nice pas de deux that we have down by the beach next to Sambo's, and was part of, at one point, the Potter Hotel. So this is the Ambassador Track area, not the Ambassador Park area. On page three, it talks about the measured noise levels on the site during our acoustical study as being in a range between 65 and 75 dBa. The actual measured sound levels were between 60 and 74, according to the reference documents there. That would be there, well, it's an attachment. On page four, about a third, two-thirds of the way down the page, is a little discussion about setbacks. What I'd like to highlight there is the front yard setback that it references as 10-foot is 10-foot on the first and second floors, and 15-foot on the third floor is where our proposal is. The side yard setbacks are six feet to the buildings proposed. There is some architectural projections that are four feet from the property line, but those are actual exceptions to setback issues. So the setbacks are proposed at six feet to the buildings on the side. The rear yard is proposed at 25 feet, as opposed to 10 feet that's required by the municipal code. The, and I'd like to add into there that the height of the proposed structure is just at 30 feet, two inches, where the required, or the maximum height is 45 feet. And if you'll notice here, and certainly in respect to Suzanne, and just in this same little area, she does acknowledge that we are putting the installation of native plants and two palm trees in the area of development limitation along the creek. So I know those other ones were just sort of oversights and bookkeeping. On page five, in the middle of the page, it talks about the local coastal plan recognizing the predominant style in component three, which is the West Beach area, as Spanish-flavor architecture typical of Santa Barbara. That is a parenthetical statement in the local coastal plan. A more accurate reading of that particular characterization is that the local coastal plan recognizes the unique character and use of styles, excuse me, the unique combination and use of styles in the area. It further than warns of a threat in anticipation of the area migrating from a motel and residential mixture to a more just singleized motel mixture, or that the single use, the, there's a threat that the combination of uses may go to a single use. And I would probably add in there that if we, in a like fashion, went from a combination of styles to a single style, it would also threaten the area. On page 13, again, in a quick bookkeeping manner, there is a reference about in the middle of the page to 25-foot-tall podicarpus trees, which actually is referenced on the adjacent lot, that was a case. Those have been removed by the neighbor years ago, so they don't exist now in any way, shape, or form. On page 14, certainly not argumentary, there's a staff recommendation in the second paragraph with regards to biology, which is followed by a recommended mitigation. Those are actually a little bit different. And my clarification is, is that my intention in the development is to follow what's considered Bio-1. The staff recommends some slightly different issues, but Bio-1 is what I understand to be the mitigation, and that's what I am proposing to follow, with the exception that in Bio-1, it proposes the removal of the two king palms right here. And I would like to put that up to your commission for feedback. Again, my biologist has worked very hard in coming up with what he feels is a superlative development of landscape along the waterway, and the two king palms are his proposal. And I'd like to follow that, if this commission would back that up. Moving forward on page 16, and just in a bit of clarification, as I mentioned that this project is including the archival preservation of an old structure, there is a lot of discussion about this structure here. The conclusion is that after review of HLC, the structure was not determined, even though it was potentially historically significant, not to be significant, and no nomination for any level of structure of merit, landmark status, or whatever was ever made. I have worked with staff and worked with the HLC to come up with preservation of that structure archivally, I'm happy to do that. But I would just like it to, that is something that I am agreeing to do, and it's, I don't believe it should be characterized as a mitigation in the sense that we don't have a historical significant component to mitigate, but we are preserving the structure on-site archivally. This talks about what I've agreed to do, what the, actually, in the section mitigation requirements of the MND, I think, I believe it's CR4, lists out the steps of that archival preservation. And it's a little confusing, they aren't really mitigation, because there isn't a historical significant component to mitigate, but we're going through the process of preservation. Lastly, on page 23, with regards to the noise study that was done on the project, my comments earlier, what was with regards to the measured sound levels on the property being between 60 and 74 dBa. This report says that our study indicated that the outdoor living areas would have a level of 72 dBa. What the report actually says is that in a worst-case study, and a designed-to level should be 72 dBa. That's actually a little higher for a little level of safety. The actual, the report says that we have two types of sound, we have, because we have a freeway and a train track in close proximity, there is a maximum anticipated level of sound with a blending of train and traffic of 69 dBa. If it's traffic only, which the train only comes by once in a while, so that's significant to know, that most of the time it's traffic only, the dBa out there is 63. So those are the anticipated levels of sound. However, the report does anticipate a little level of safety. So when we've put together our mitigations for sound, we have used a design standard of 72 for the outside areas.
About one minute, please.
Excuse me, I'm actually done. I do just have, well, I had to have one, just a real quick one, it's very simple. On page 30, constructions project timeframe, in my original application, I said 10 months, and when Suzanne asked me later, how long would it take, I got a little bit more optimistic and said nine. That's fine. But on the last paragraph of her project, it references the construction period as a 16-month period, and it's not, it's nine months, as in the paragraph previous to this. So we are anticipating a nine-month construction period. And with that, that's my comments on the MND. Again, I'm pleased to have this opportunity to present my project to you from an environmental standpoint. Pete Aylin's here for any questions, or I'm certainly here for any questions from the commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. The green slips are in the back. Anybody wishing to comment on this may come forward at this time. And we did receive a communication from Paula Westbury.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just for the record, in the past, I have received letters from the Pearl Chase Society, Kellum DeForest, and Robert Maxim, in regards to neighborhood compatibility and the potential historic structure.
Oh, thank you very much. I didn't happen to have that. All right, thank you. And you'll enter those into the record?
They were actually received before your last concept, I just wanted to remind you that you have in the past received those letters.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, I'll close public comment, and I'll open it to questions by the commission. Now, we have a special request, commissioners, that we not combine our questions with comments, that we keep them separate for the sake of record-keeping. So, that being the case, and three lights appearing before me spontaneously, I'll just start on my left with Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question for staff. Does any of the planned activity for the Lower Mission Creek project have any implications for this site in the future?
Madam Chair, Chair Thompson, or Commissioner Thompson, this is a channelized portion of the creek, and so there are no proposed changes to this portion of the creek at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Jacobs?
Thank you, Chair Larson. My question is pertaining to the historic resources, and in our report, we see a proposed historic district for the West Beach area. And what is the status of that? And is there, how much does that weigh into our required discussion for our environmental document?
Chair Larson, Commissioner Jacobs, I'm not aware of the exact update on the proposal of the historic neighborhood. I believe it was, it has at least been brought before city council, but this property is actually outside of that area. Is that correct?
It's in the survey of the area.
But it's not in the proposed.
However, it did not receive actual designation.
That is my understanding.
And so it becomes part of our discussion of neighborhood compatibility, but it's not even been adopted by the city. So in considering the historical resources, we can look at this as a reference point, but the requirements to accommodate it are at our discretion. Is that about right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to ask about basically three points that Mr. Edwards raised. Number one is the ten-foot setback from Mission Creek versus twenty-five. At least, that's what I understood Mr. Edwards to say. Is not the required setback from Mission Creek twenty-five feet?
I think what he was trying to convey was in an R4 lot, anywhere else, it would be a ten-foot rear yard setback.
I see.
However, because it's Mission Creek, it's twenty-five feet development limitation area.
Thank you. And then the question about the two King Palms and their relationship to being riparian vegetation. Do you have any comments about that at this point?
Chair Larson, Commissioner White, it has been the policy of City Creek staff and the Planning Commission in the past that in that twenty-five-foot no-development area along Mission Creek, we're encouraging to the extent feasible, complete native vegetation in planting plans. And the King Palm is not a native species. It does provide bat and bird habitat, which is what Mr. Edwards was referring to, but we prefer another tree in there that is native that also provides bird and bat habitat.
So does that then become a significant environmental issue?
No, and that's why it's recommended mitigation. It is a policy of the city to normally require native landscaping there. It's not enough non-native landscaping to create a significant issue per se with regard to SEQA.
It being non-riparian area anyway, perhaps it's another consideration. Thank you. And then Mr. Edwards mentioned the, sort of the fact that this is a potentially histor, forgive me if I don't get the wording exactly right, a potentially historically significant structure, but it's not a historically significant structure, and so it shouldn't in fact require archival documentation.
Chair Larson, Commissioner White, according to SEQA, any potential structure of merit would be considered a significant historical resource. It doesn't matter that it was designated or not. I mean, it matters with regard to our city policies, but with regard to SEQA, the way that they define historic resources, it would qualify for that. And so the Historic Structures Report recommends as mitigations, the archive of the existing structure, to bring any impact down to less than significant.
For SEQA purposes, the mitigation would be required?
Yes.
I mean, the archival.
Yes, it would be required to bring the impact down to less than significant.
Okay, and for the audience, the archival mitigation is to take photographs of the structure before it's torn down and other, basically give it a good narrative description as well, so that for the future, there would be knowledge about what was on the site historically. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. White. Mr. Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My only question has to do with the noise thresholds, and I may have asked this question before, and if I have, I apologize to staff, but I'm not clear what the bright line is, whether it's sixty decibels or something above that for exterior noise level. I see that this project does have the mitigations in place from the noise analysis to get us below sixty-five, but I always get confused where we sit when we're starting to talk about exterior noise thresholds. Is it seventy-five, is it sixty? How does that play into the issue at hand?
Commissioner Justice, you ask a good question. The zoning code actually requires that required open space areas meet the sixty dB A LDN, which is an average ambient noise level. And it also requires the indoor areas meet forty-five dB A LDN. From an environmental perspective, the noise element of the general plan identifies seventy-five dB A LDN as the absolute maximum you would want, and after that point, you would have significant noise impacts. So there is a difference. I think the city has had the policy that it would be considered an environmental impact to have noise levels above seventy-five dB A LDN, but again, our zoning code requires the sixty. It's a little bit different between the policy and the environmental. Most projects meet both. In this case, there are, the area adjacent to Mission Creek would be above the sixty dB A LDN, and that is because of the adjacent train tracks and Highway 101. And the applicant is providing open space areas and private open space living areas that meet the sixty dB A LDN that are in back of the buildings. So, clear as mud?
I'm not, I'm not quite sure on this, but at some point, would it be possible to have a little lunchtime work session on thresholds or provide the commission with the full list of the thresholds that the city employs when it doesn't, environmental initial study, negative declaration, or EIR? I know these are in a little bit of flux with the latest stuff out of Sacramento, but it would help to get us all on the right page, so when we see these documents, we can go, yeah, that's, we're under the bright line or we're over the bright line. And this is one of those cases where there's several interpretations, the policy interpretation, which brings in all the other findings versus the environmental. So that's just a request.
Thank you, Mr. Justice. Mr. Bartlet, and then Ms. Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, to follow up on Commissioner Justice's question on sound, there was quite a bit of discussion at the end of the prior Planning Commission review in '06 regarding that, and it seemed like it was being bandered back and forth whether or not the sound requirements were being imposed on the required decks or all decks, since there were duplicative decks on some of the units. And there was an interpretation by Mr. Vincent, and I'd be curious to have that clarified, since that was prior to my date on the commission. As I see it, in the sound report, the required decks are the ones that are being mitigated, and that's on the very last page of our document, but the duplicative decks that face the railroad and the highway are not being protected, at least from what I see in the sound report. So I just want to make sure that we're interpreting the required decks as the ones that need it, and the extras don't.
Mr. Cunnell?
Chair Larson, Commissioner Bartlet. That is correct. The noise level has to be sixty dB on the required open space on the outdoors, the required outdoor. And the thinking is that, you know, the people who live there should have one outdoor space that they can go to, and it's not completely noisy, and then if there are others, then, you know, that face the creek or face the mountains or whatever, and for different reasons, you know, at least they have the one that they can go to. I think that's how we get there.
Okay, that helps. And then also, I think, under consideration, at least from what we've all been witnessing with Plan Santa Barbara, that threshold of sixty is going to move back to the state standard of sixty-five, so it would increase that threshold slightly for the outdoor spaces. Okay, and then my second question then is related to setbacks. Obviously, there's listed the setback encroachments for the front setback. This project complies with the, I think, the intent or spirit of setbacks in that the first and second floors match the ten-foot setback, and the third-floor component is set back fifteen feet, but because of the interpretation that it's, quote, "a three-story building," no matter where the third story is, the entire building is now requiring a modification because of the one- and two-story components?
Chair Larson, Commissioner Bartlet, it's, the zoning code is actually a little bit more complicated than that. The normal three-story building setback is fifteen feet for the front yard, but if the third-story square footage is less than half of the square footage of the ground floor, we just changed this one. But basically, if that's the case, then the setback, it used to be fifteen, but now it's twenty, because we just changed it for the last.
There used to be a way to do the variable setback and comply, but now, because those first stories don't meet the fifteen, that requires a mod.
I think it's because the third story is not fifty percent or less of the ground floor that the whole.
Divided by a third of the lot width, right?
Not anymore. That's the thing that we changed.
That's the one that went away, I know. It's real simple.
Now it's just twenty feet. If your, if your, if your third floor air is less than fifty percent of the ground floor, then you can be set back twenty feet instead of, then the first story to be ten, then the second, then the third.
Yeah, so it needs a mod.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Well, thank you for all that. No, it's a real pepper. Okay, any other, oh, good, Ms. Lodge?
Thank you. That last exchange left my head in a spin. Okay, could you go through it again, Mr. Cunnell?
Okay, I'll make it simpler this time.
And where does this, how much does this project not conform to the ordinance?
Okay, let's start at the beginning. So if the third story of your three-story building is fifty percent or less of the ground floor, then your first two stories can be set back ten feet, and your third story is set back twenty feet. The idea is kind of a wedding cake, right? You get a little benefit of having a small third story, and it has to be set back. Otherwise, if you don't meet the fifty percent rule, then the whole building has to be fifteen feet, all three stories of it. And I'm not sure of the, you know what the size?
I don't have a breakdown on each floor.
I'm pretty sure that the third floor is more than fifty percent of the ground floor, and that kicks you automatically into the fifteen foot for everything, which then you need the modification for.
Okay, and how much of a modification is being requested here?
Well, they're asking for the first two stories to be ten feet and the third story to be fifteen feet, instead of it all being fifteen feet.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Lodge?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. And I have a question. Was any consideration given or opportunity given to recycle the house that's on the site now? Mr. Allen, would you please come up, since I see you nodding vigorously?
I think that's number nine in our.
Number nine, oh, okay.
Mitigations from the Historic Structures Report is to advertise it and do all that, so.
Thank you. All right, so no more questions? We'll go to comments by the commission. Oh, any public comment? We did that already? Yeah, okay, that's all right. I, Ms. Jacobs suggested public comment, so I thought, well, okay. Mr. Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. These are comments on the completeness of the environmental document and not on the project itself, if I understand the hearing that we're having today. Okay, with that, I just want to make a very brief comment that I think the applicant has showed some of the best understanding of the role and importance of a negative declaration of anybody who has addressed us in quite a long time. I can't recall an applicant who went page by page through the N D, correcting it so that it was, would serve as a full informational document. And thank you for doing that. It shows you're really focused on how the EIR process fits into the planning process. On the issue of noise, I continue to have concerns that placing exterior living areas in areas that are in excess of sixty-five dB, if not categorized as an environmental threshold exceedance, it worries me that this may be a policy inconsistency with the noise element. So it would be very helpful to have the staff report give us greater clarity on those areas which are inside and outside of this threshold, so when it comes time to make the decision, we can take that into account. Secondly, I think the neg deck should have greater discussion of the project need specifically for the modifications that are requested. If it's not in the neg deck, it absolutely needs to be in the staff report, because I for one need that detail and analysis if we're to make the findings in favor of a modification. And at the present time, I don't, I don't have that foundation. So that's my only other comment at this point. And, oh, last thing, under land use compatibility, it would be good to know if there are any other modifications, side yard, rear yard, front yard mods, that have been granted by the Planning Commission or the staff hearing officer in this neighborhood, so we have a comparative basis against which to measure this project against. And that's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Justice. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In that regard, in the regard of the, basically the bulk of the building, I would ask that we have a good conversation in the, either the staff report or the, that would work for me as well as the environmental document on the neighboring properties and their setbacks, and whether they are legal non-conforming, what their status is, not just what they are. And I'm satisfied with the document. I did, I hope that it's, with the comments as they were circulating, another question came to mind, and I'm hoping that I can bring that up in my comment time, if that's all right. And that is, since we're seeing an environmental document, does that mean that the, I'm thinking this project could have gone to staff hearing officer, but maybe in the coastal zone it doesn't, it goes to Planning Commission? So I'm wondering whether this goes to staff hearing officer or goes to Planning Commission when it comes back.
Madam Chair, Commissioner White, this project will return to the Planning Commission because it is in the appealable jurisdiction and on Mission Creek.
I see.
It comes back to the Planning Commission.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. All right, Ms. Jacobs?
Thank you, Chair Larson. My comments, we're in comments now, yes?
Yes.
My comments are pertaining primarily to the Historic Resources section. I drove around the neighborhood some more this morning, and the street that this particular one is on is not part of what could be a historic neighborhood. It's very clear from visiting the site. However, that neighborhood does have potential, perhaps through the general plan and its sustainable neighborhood plans, which will be happening sometime after 2010, there is a possibility for this neighborhood to gain some traction as an historic district or as something worth preserving in its one- and two-story 1920s, 1930s appearance. And so when this building is demolished and goes away, I would like to see that the archival preservation is especially good. The archival, you know, it's not real preservation. If I go to Hawaii and I come back and I show you my album of photographs from my trip to Hawaii, it's real different from being in Hawaii. So the archival presentation is a really thin, unsatisfying kind of alternative. But it's what this document recommends. And I'm wondering why this document didn't recommend any other kinds of alternatives, such as preserving the facade of the building and building something that was in a more cohesive architectural style. And I did see the comments from the Historic Landmarks Commission and so on, so I do see the comparison of this building and its structure to the industrial. So, I do see the comparison of this building and its structure to the industrial buildings on that street rather than the historic neighborhood. But given all that, I would like to see an especially good mitigation in terms of the documentation of the building as it pertains to the neighborhood, not just this little building by itself, but how it fits in to the development of this neighborhood, which has changed since the 20s, when it was built. And that's the main comment that I have on this. Mr. Justice already spoke about the noise. It's noisy there, and so we will need to consider that again in our discussion of the project itself. But for the document, it seems fine.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. With, I agree with Mr. Justice and Ms. Jacobs about the noise being one of the key focuses there. But with the corrections of fact and detail in the draft mitigated negative deck, I think it's a good document for evaluating the program as we move forward. The one comment I would suggest in Bio 1 is, since this is not a rural or suburban creek area, riparian creek area, I don't really think we need to constrain the landscape architect to only native plants there. I don't, I wouldn't have a problem with the palm trees as suggested. So, that would be my only suggested change that we haven't already talked about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Bartlet?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, most of the items I wanted to mention have been covered. Those were the sound issue and setback that was brought up by Commissioner White. To add to the setback discussion, though, I think it should be perhaps recognized in this report that even though it is an R4 lot, you know, under current standards, the minimum lot size is 14,000. This is a tiny lot, a remnant. It's a 6,000-square-foot lot, and that the combined setbacks that are required on this lot consume 3,600 feet of the 6,000-square-foot lot. So, it's really constrained. So, I think that needs to be explained in this document as it relates to the modification requests, because it's excessive for this small of a lot. So, I think that that should just be a further topic of discussion to explain what is causing those setbacks in this report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlet. Anyone else? All right, thank you very much. I don't have anything to add, so do you need anything else today?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I do want to clarify that the comment period is a 30-day period on this document. It began February 2nd, and it will end on March 3rd, 2009. If the public would like to make public comment, they would need to submit that in writing to me. The address is there on the screen for mailing it in, or email at sjohnson@santabarborca.gov. And that will be all.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Aylin. Thank you very much. So, with that, we are to our administrative agenda. And any announcements? Any liaison reports? I have something from the staff hearing officer. Just give me a second here to go through my pile. Here it is. From the staff hearing officer, there were three projects on the agenda from February 11th, which I didn't have this report before for last meeting. So, I want to thank Susan Riordan very much for making sure that it was in my hands for today. The project at 633 De La Vina. Current development on the site consists of eight-unit housing authority apartment complex with eight parking spaces. The project involved upgrades to the existing building for ADA and aesthetic purposes, and a mod was required to allow a plaster entry surround to encroach 1 foot 3 inches into the required 10-foot setback. So, that was one. The second project was located at 2511 Morel Road, and it's also a mod project. And the third project was 1604 Loma Street, which I did drive by at the corner of Loma and California, which, that project began in 2005 as an application for remodeling and an addition, ended up being a complete demolition. It did have a modification approved with the finding that the increase in height was an appropriate improvement, and that it did not result in new floor area within a setback. And it's quite a nice piece of architecture, although I'm not supposed to really say that in the meeting. So, anything else? Minutes? Where are we on minutes, Julie?
The minutes of January 8th were tabled from last meeting to this meeting, and I believe were to include a listing of all the Planning Commission liaisons for 2009.
Oh, okay, thank you. All right. Ms. Jacobs?
Thank you, Chair Larson. I have one kind of typo on the January 8th minutes on page 7. The item number six, the very first line, it says, "The neighbor stated that the previous central plan proposal was determined to be exempt." I think that should have been central plant. They were talking about an actual structure and not the plan.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
And then, I did want to confirm that we would have the full listing. Let's see, on page 14, the administrative agenda for that January 8th meeting says, "Planning Commission liaison appointments are," and then it lists kind of a smattering of the new ones, but it really should say, "Please refer to the attached table." Well, they are just simply listed like this. Okay, that's fine. Okay, that's all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Any other corrections? Not seeing none?
We've approval of the minutes.
Thank you. Would you please mention that they're from January 8th? Thank you.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I will be abstaining from item 3B.
Thank you. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, any other business for us to conduct today?
Yes, the draft minutes of January 22nd.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, thank you. I'm looking. Sure. Okay, this would be the minutes of, this would be, excuse me? Oh, yes, resolution numbers 001-09. The 5 and 600 blocks is, pardon? Oh, okay. All right, then we're okay then.
All three of them?
One moment. And we are done for January?
We had one correction on the reso, the last reso. Commissioner Justice suggested a wording change for the one reso, and we approved all three with that correction.
Great, thank you.
January 8th, but January 22nd minutes, we haven't talked about yet.
Correct.
Okay. So, January 22nd? Right. Sorry. I need a second to get to my agenda. Here we go. So, that would be... I'm not seeing it here. Oh, here we go. Review and consideration of the draft minutes of January 22nd, 2009. Okay. Any comments? Any changes?
We've approval of the January 22nd minutes.
One second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And with that, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.